Is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, February 8, 2021 via video conference. The time is 6:00 PM. I want to welcome viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As a Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the Superintendent of approved budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the Superintendent, and we have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees and not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members receive information related to items on today's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to hear the matters discussed. Thank you for the time to join us today and for your interest in Galena Park Independent School District.
At this time, I will call a roll. When your name is called, please answer with "here" or "present." Ramon Garza, President. Jeff Miller, Vice President.
Here.
Iker Stevens, Secretary.
Here.
Trustees, Wanda Heaton Johnson.
Present.
Noe Esparsa.
Here.
Norma Hernandez.
Present.
Herbert Alexander Sanchez.
Here.
Also joining us through video conference, and we'll respond with "here," our President, Marsha Rhonda Jackson, Executive Director for School and Community Relations.
Here.
Brishan Thompson, Coordinator for School and Community Relations.
Anna Salinas, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent's Office.
Present.
Brian King, Executive Director for Security Cyber Security, Chief of Police and Entrepreneur of Technology.
Here.
Elizabeth Valdez, Executive Assistant to the Board of Trustees and Superintendent.
Here.
Cabinet Member, Sonia George.
Here.
Dr. Wanda T. Collin.
Here.
Elizabeth Layler.
Here.
Mary Moore.
Here.
Dr. Michelle Letts.
Here.
Nina Edgar.
Here.
Dr. David Harris.
Here.
Mike McKay.
Holly LaMoy.
Here.
And I, Dr. John, Superintendent of Schools, here. Staff members will practice social distancing as required and outline, using mask, hand sanitizer, disinfectant, etc., as recommended. I will now turn the speaking over to Ramon Garza, Board President.
Ms. Valdez, are there any citizen participation items for this evening?
We have no citizen participation items today.
Ms. Valdez, are there any public comment items for this evening?
We have no public comment items today.
Today's invocation will be presented by myself, and the pledges to the American Texas flag will be led by Dr. Moore. Please bow your head. Loving God, your desire is for our wholeness and well-being. We hold in tenderness and prayer the collective suffering of our world at this time. We grieve precious lives lost and vulnerable lives threatened. We ache for ourselves and our neighbors standing before an uncertain future. We pray, may love, not fear, go viral. Inspire our leaders to discern and choose wisely, align with the common good, help us to practice social distancing, and reveal to us new and creative ways to come together in spirit and in solidarity. Call us to profound trust in your faithful presence, youth, the God who does not abandon. Amen.
Will you stand? Pledge the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic.
Stand.
Which is stand.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, everlasting, just as far.
Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the Texas.
One state, under God.
One and indivisible.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
This evening, we have some special recognitions. I'd like to congratulate everyone being recognized. At this time, I will turn the floor over to Marsha Rhonda Jackson, Executive Director for School and Community Relations.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Moore. I am grateful to assist with the recognition portion of this evening's meeting. We are excited to recognize a local business, High Performance Identity, HPI, for their generous donation of face masks to Galena Park ISD. This donation provides our students and staff additional access to face masks to lessen their potential exposure to COVID-19 and other harmful viruses. Thank you to HPI for their kind donation to Galena Park ISD. This concludes the recognition portion of this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any Board member to make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member. It may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment at this time?
The only thing I would like to say is Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Eat, pray, and love, and be safe.
Harold Sonny Fletcher III, Senior Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 bond program construction update.
Good evening, President Garza, Board, Dr. Moore and Cabinet. Let's screen share real quick. All good? For construction, jump right into it here. Jacinto City Elementary. Picture on the left, in the far left, right behind that mock-up, that's what we call that, that sort of grid looking is a mock-up where the contractor constructs and everyone gets a chance to comment on how flashing works and window details work. But more specifically, to the left is the, what we commonly call the Southern Edition. You can see the sidewalk going in to connect here at the, sort of the back or the south side of the building. And then the picture on the right is the new addition on the north side of the building. So you can see the finishes are in, carpets obviously in, there's a roll of carpet, probably to go in another space there. Very happy at the progress getting made there. Galena Park High School's in a little bit different. Come on, computer. Galena Park High School here, you see the metal stud walls are up. We've got our backing plates in for where marker board gets mounted in the classroom. So really happy with that progress. See conduits in on the left, not any wire yet, but happy the conduits are going in. And of course, you see the ductwork there in the picture on the left. And then that blue cable you see spiraled, sitting in a coil there, that would be the network cabling. So very happy to see all that going in. And of course, we've got a worker in the picture on the left who's wearing a hard hat. So of course, happy to see him being safe. They're GP High School, very happy about that. There we go. And then our projects in design, of course, Pyburn Elementary's coming along very nicely with Madeline Chu, very happy with her progress, and that'll be coming to the Board here in a few months with their guaranteed maximum price with our construction manager at risk. And then Galena Park High School additions and renovations, working on our Phase Two and Three design. The Board Construction Committee's been involved in those meetings. We'll have a few more design meetings here coming up very shortly. And of course, Summer 2021 might be our last summer of renovation work, we'll see. Woodland Acres Middle HVAC work and MacArthur Elementary miscellaneous. Got a few things that were outlined by the Bond Committee there. Thank you so much. And anybody have any questions?
Sonny, one question. What's the, what are, I know we were getting with the city of, Jacinto City on the street over there on the elementary, what's, what's the status on that? Do we know?
The, the back street and the paving?
Yes.
Was that, was that, we're wrapping that up. You saw that sidewalk going in. So as soon as that wraps up, the contractor's got a strip through there that gets asphalt. And then I think we should be in really good shape. Back there on that back street, it'll still need some more cleanup there on the south side. And then we'll, we'll sit down and meet with the city. There's some other spots on that road. It would definitely be appropriate to talk with the city of, you know.
Yeah, because I know there was already some, some like repairs or some patches done back there, but I didn't know if, if, what was going to happen. I had some people asking me, and I said, well, I'll find out.
Some more patches and repair to come. And then from the city's perspective, I think they put off patching and repairing after, you know, they ran a water, a new water line through there.
Okay.
Best I can recall, they put off their patching and repair until we were complete back there with our heavy, heavy truck, obviously, heavy deliveries, et cetera.
All right.
So I'd say in the next few months, that'll be done, to be very specific, will be done, and all our patches will be installed.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion approving the Superintendent to write a letter to state officials requesting the star dash ELC be waived until the pandemic is over.
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve the Superintendent to write a letter to state officials requesting star and of course be waived until the pandemic is over as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was, was made by Wanda Johnson and second by Norma Hernandez. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, oppose, or abstain. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller, in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens, in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson, in favor.
Noe Esparsa.
Noe Esparsa, in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez, in favor.
Herbert Sanchez.
Herbert Sanchez, in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motion passed seven to zero with no abstentions. I will entertain a motion to approve the Order of Election calling for an election to be held in the Galena Park Independent School District on May 1, 2021, for the purpose of electing two trustees to the Board for regular terms for the following positions, position one and position two.
I know, as far as a move, we approve the Order of Election calling for an election to be held in the Galena Park Independent School District on May 1, 2021 as presented.
I, Jeff Miller, second the motion.
If the motion passes, I, Ramon Garza, authorize GPISD to utilize my electronic signature for this item. Ms. Stevens, do you authorize the use of electronic signature as well?
Yes, I authorize the use of my electronic signature.
The motion was made by Noe Esparsa and second by Jeff Miller. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, oppose, or abstain. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller, in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens, in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson, in favor.
Noe Esparsa.
Noe Esparsa, in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez, in favor.
Herbert Sanchez.
Herbert Sanchez, in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution regarding compensation and great practices and delegate to the Superintendent the authority to establish a one-time payment amounts and substitute pay rates for the remainder of the 2020-21 school year.
But I, Wanda Johnson, definitely move we approve the resolution regarding compensation and great in practices as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
If the motion passes, I, Ramon Garza, authorize GPISD to utilize my electronic signature for this item. Ms. Stevens, do you authorize the use of electronic signature as well?
Yes, I do.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and second by Norma Hernandez. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, oppose, or abstain. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller, in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens, in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson, in favor.
Noe Esparsa.
Noe Esparsa, in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez, in favor.
Herbert Sanchez.
Herbert Sanchez, in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. With respect to the general consent agenda, do we want to remove any items for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Adrian Stevens, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Wanda Johnson, second the motion.
If the motion passes, I, Ramon Garza, authorize GPISD to utilize my electronic, electronic signature for these items. Ms. Stevens, do you authorize the use of your electronic signature as well?
Yes.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and second by Wanda Johnson. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, oppose, or abstain. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller, in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens, in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson, in favor.
Noe Esparsa.
Noe Esparsa, in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez, in favor.
Herbert Sanchez.
Herbert Sanchez, in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any items for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I know, as far as a move, we approve the financial consent agenda as is.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
If the motion passes, I, Ramon Garza, authorize GPISD to utilize my electronic signature for these items. Ms. Stevens, do you authorize the use of electronic signature as well?
Yes.
A motion was made by Noe Esparsa and second by Norma Hernandez. As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, oppose, or abstain. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller, in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens, in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson, in favor.
Noe Esparsa.
Noe Esparsa, in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez, in favor.
Herbert Sanchez.
Herbert Sanchez, in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motion carries seven to zero with no abstentions. Information, A, Sonia George, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, presented. One, the comparative tax collection report for the period of September 1 through December 31 for fiscal years 2019 through 2020 and 2020 through 2021. Quarterly, number two, quarterly investments report for the period of September 1, 2020 through November 30, 2020. Third, the 2016 bond program financial report as of December 31, 2020. B, Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented. One, the early Head Start Policy Council meeting minutes from December 2020. Two, the early Head Start Update and Fund 205 Expenditure Report summary from December 2020. And third, the GPISD Education Foundation Audit Report. An executive session of the Board will now be held in matters contained in the notice for the meeting as authorized by Sections 551.001 through Sections 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Opens Meetings Act. The time is 6:18 PM. Staff with the exception of Dr. Moore, Ms. George, Ms. Valdez, and Ms. Salinas are dismissed from the boardroom at this time. All other staff joining us via video conference will be placed on a Zoom waiting room. Staff who are live streaming the meeting, please stop the live stream videos. Staff who are live streaming the meeting, please stop the live stream videos. Executive session is adjourned. The live streaming has begun again and the board is now in open session. The time is 6:29 PM. I will entertain a motion on the items covered in the executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented?
I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the employment contractual person as presented.
I, Wanda Johnson, second it.
The motion was made by Norma Hernandez and second by Wanda Johnson.
Oh, you heard me, okay.
As I call your name, please state your name and indicate your vote by stating in favor, oppose, or abstain. Jeff Miller.
Jeff Miller, in favor.
Adrian Stevens.
Adrian Stevens, in favor.
Wanda Johnson.
Wanda Johnson, in favor.
Noe Esparsa.
Noe Esparsa, in favor.
Norma Hernandez.
Norma Hernandez, in favor.
Herbert Sanchez.
Herbert Sanchez, in favor.
I, Ramon Garza, am in favor. The motion carries seven to zero with no abstention. There being no other business before the board at this time, the meeting is adjourned.